Hello, I'm Bob Butler from KCBS Radio. Welcome to a forum of candidates running for the El Cerrito City Council. Today's forum is sponsored by the Contra Costa County Elections Division, Contra Costa County Television, and the West Contra Costa County and Diablo Valley League of Women Voters. We're recording these roundtables here at the studios of Contra Costa TV with assistance from the studios of Concord, Richmond, and Walnut Creek. Now, there are three candidates running for two seats. All the candidates are able to join us here. They are Gabriel Quinto, Vanessa Warhite, and Carolyn Weisinger. We do lots before the show to determine who was going to speak first, and we'll begin with Gabe.
Thank you, Bob. Over the last couple of years, this city has dealt with many, many challenges. We have had to face tactical financial issues. We've had to deal with the impacts of COVID-19, and we've had to have a challenging time full of difficult decisions. And we have been taking action to fix past mistakes, and we made a great deal of progress. Our city is back on stable ground. We are now in the position where we can envision a healthy and sustainable future. During this year as mayor, there was a theme that has connected with the task before us, and that is sustainability. For El Cerrito, we have many issues and projects that we're working on that will fulfill the city's short-term issues and projects that we're working on on the long-term vision. We have focused this year on finishing what we've started. We must be mindful of our resources, including our staff, capacity, and we consider our work. The vision of sustainability for El Cerrito includes several categories: financial stability, environmental stability, economic stability, and sustainable health and safety.
Vanessa, you're an activist. You believe in equity. Why do you want to be on the council?
I have been a lifelong renter until two years ago, when I bought my first home finally in El Cerrito. Thank you. I am very concerned about displacement. I'm concerned about housing costs. I'm also concerned about our city's budget. We are still in a budget crisis, make no mistake. We are still number six on a list that nobody wants to be on, the auditor's list of the 243 California cities. We are number six from the top in terms of our financial crisis. Our bond rating is triple B minus. That's one step just above junk bond status. So I think that we need to bring some new, fresh vision to our city council, and we need to protect the residents that are there, and we need to make some tough decisions so that we can actually really get our city back on good footing.
Carolyn, you, I understand, you run SF Pride, which is a big organization, very important organization. Why would you want to add being on the city council to that?
That is the number-one question that people have been asking me for months. But I will say that being the president of San Francisco Pride puts me in a very unique possibility or area because I'm one of the only people who has experienced, had the fortunate or unfortunate reality of facing an organization that's gone through an audit such as what the city of El Cerrito did. And, you know, the city of El Cerrito has gone through, actually, their recovery, what the city is actually in is in maintenance. And that's what I've actually had to be at San Francisco Pride. We went through the audit. We got the same result, actually, as the city of El Cerrito, which was that we had not been managing our budget well enough. We had been spending over our means in order to meet the needs of all of our community members, and we did not come out with a reserve. So we had that same result. I came in after we had actually built the reserve, and so it was my job to actually be the conservator of it and do that during a pandemic. And so that's where the city of El Cerrito is. So we'll say that I'm not necessarily adding on. I'm just doing the same thing that I've already done in San Francisco, and I am excited to do that in a city that I grew up in, in the flats right there on the line between South Richmond and El Cerrito, going to El Cerrito High School, learning how to be a leader here in El Cerrito. It is my great honor and privilege to bring back what I have learned here to the city of El Cerrito.
A gaucho.
A gaucho, definitely. And if you're not a gaucho, then I'm walking off this set.
Okay, get your stuff in. Hey, what do you think are the biggest challenges facing the city?
I mean, the biggest challenge facing the city is actually going to be the maintenance. You know, we are, even though we've come out of the budget crisis and we're trying to figure out how do we maintain and how do we look at our revenue streams? Because there are some of those revenue streams that are not going to carry us on into the future. So what is that going to be? Well, then, we're going into now economic recovery. We're going into actually bringing in new businesses, building our tax base. So if we're building things like the transit-oriented development, we're focusing on revitalizing the El Cerrito Plaza, we're focusing on now the housing element, which includes the Del Norte section of San Pablo. So these are all the things that are going to help us maintain what the short-term solutions did for us in the last couple of years. Those short-term solutions are going to go away. So how are we going to go on to the future? It's something I call having a pragmatic progressive view. It's holding the issues of the community but understanding the very real realities of being an administrator of this city. So really balancing what we're going to do in the future economically is going to be the greatest challenge of our city.
Gabe, do you think you have the answers for what Carolyn was talking about?
I absolutely do, and one of it is the city-approved fiscal recovery and sustainability plan, and we have made significant progress on the state auditor's recommendation. So we will be sending a letter to the audit and the audit committee, and we will also be sending that to the governor, lieutenant governor, and our partners in Sacramento. We made major improvements in our budget and financial situation, and for the very first time in many, many years, our city's general fund reserve is not only in the black, but it is funded at a level that means that the budget and the financial position is more stable than it has been in many, many years. We've been conservative in our budget and very thoughtful and strategic about spending. We're committed to continuing improvement, and though we have come a long way, we want to stay the course. And my partners at the city council have continued to take action, dealing with the pension liability this month. For years, I've been asking, let's do the 115 trust so we can prepay for our unfunded liabilities. That will happen later this month and in October, and so we are well on our way to address pension obligations. We've also taken to eliminate the OPEB, and that is other post-employment benefits liability, and at the same time, employees have increased their contributions to CalPERS. So the city continues to work with our Financial Advisory Board recommendations, including the funding of emergency disaster funds, achieving a $1 million general plan surplus from the general plan, and increasing and maintaining the appropriate level of general fund services. So we are now at 18% reserves, and it will be probably more than that. So I'm very excited about that. It has been many, many years since the city of El Cerrito has had a multimillion-dollar surplus. I'm very proud of that.
Thank you. Vanessa, do you think the city is doing enough to maintain financial stability? Do you foresee any other revenue opportunities for the city?
No, actually, I don't think we're doing enough. I think it's super important to recognize there are two main strategies that kept our city from going bankrupt. The first is that ARPA money, the federal relief money that came to what was supposed to come to help our families, it was supposed to, other cities use that money to lower utility bills for low-income houses by putting solar on their roof, or to pay for services for children who had been locked in their homes for two years and not given educational opportunities. Instead, our city used that money to balance our budget. I want our residents to have access to funds for things like other cities got. Secondly, property transfer taxes on outrageously priced housing help to balance our budget, and that's not a sustainable model. And the reserves that the mayor has referred to are actually predicated on continuing growth of home prices, which honestly is not great. It's not a reliable or sustainable model because already those predictions are not bearing fruit, and it's also not a way to keep people in their homes if their prices of housing is going through the roof. So basically, since 2014, we have consistently spent beyond our means, and that is unfortunately not changing. I do agree with the mayor about the Section 115 trust. We absolutely need that. It's like a 401K for cities, right? And that will help to pull our bond rating up out of the deep, dark hole that it's been in. And I think we need to revisit where we allocate money in our budget, so we should be prioritizing departments that our citizens value and that bring money in. I've talked to parents who cannot get swim lessons for their kids, and I've also talked to lifeguards that can't get hours at the pool. So like, we just, we need to go back to basics and really start from a zero spot. What does our city need? Where should we be budgeting, and how can we budget within our means?
That whole point of if you're basing your revenue projections on home prices rising, that's already popped because home prices have gone, are now going down. If that's the case, that could be a problem. Is that true?
No. I want to let everyone know that with home prices, El Cerrito is still one of the most desirable bedroom communities in the whole Bay Area. So we're getting folks from San Francisco and Oakland that are coming out to El Cerrito because we're a small bedroom community. They know that we have, we're a safe city. We support public safety. We are not going to defund our public safety. Our public safety has also been affected by attrition. Because of the social upheavals going on, we have, one-third of our police is out because they could be making more money at BART or other cities. So looking at that and looking at the plan, so many cities in the state of California are looking at what we did with the real estate transfer tax, and with that comes along the rebates. There's a rebate program where cities can make arrangements with the buyer and seller, and then they can work on whether it is a brace and bolt for many of our older 1950s mid-century homes. People want this kind of housing, and a lot of the people are the very lucky ones that can afford it. We are one of only 38 cities in the state of California that actually is providing housing for all, so I'm very, very proud of that. You look at the Future Project, which was my vision of adding transit-oriented development at the El Cerrito Plaza BART station, and including a 21st Century Library. So looking at that, and BART is heading that up, that will happen. We're, for the most part, people are excited about this. We are excited about our 21st Century Library, and this is for the next generation of folks getting back to, that would like to move back to El Cerrito after college, after working on their degrees, and they will be able to move because there will be housing for all.
Carolyn, do you think that the development at El Cerrito BART station is a good idea? Do you support that with the new library?
I absolutely support the transit-oriented development, especially the library is very near and dear to my heart. I was appointed to the library commission by our board of supervisor, John Julia, because he wanted to make sure that I had all the information to make sure I was able to advocate for that library specifically on our council. And I just want to say to the mayor's point, you know, I age myself on Contra Costa Television. I'll say that I'm 43 years old. I'm one of those people who we're trying to bring back into El Cerrito. And one of the reasons that I chose to run for El Cerrito City Council was trolling around on social media and going into these young black professional groups, and you would have people who were getting jobs in places like Silicon Valley. They said they didn't want to raise their families in Silicon Valley. They wanted to come to the East Bay. They didn't want to go to Oakland, but when you would bring up someone like El Cerrito, El Cerrito was not necessarily desirable. And we're talking about young black professionals, young brown professionals, queer professionals. So we want to make sure that we're building housing for all, but we're also building a culture that people want to come to. The city of El Cerrito is a changing city, a changing community, but we want to make sure that we're keeping the spirit of what El Cerrito has been for these last 100 years. So that, for me, is going to be very important. When we're talking about building the transit-oriented development, that's going to affect so much more than just the BART itself. It's going to, of course, bring housing. It's going to make a more accessible library for our youth who don't have access to our current library, which is up on Stockton where there is no, there's no mass transit that goes up there. But you're also talking about housing that's coming up and down that San Pablo corridor that is going to attract, is going to help us attract more businesses, I'll say this again, into the, to the El Cerrito Plaza. I remember a time when El Cerrito Plaza was where you went to get your school clothes. That's where Capo's was. It's where you went to get your engagement ring at the Diamond Center. People don't go to the plaza as they used to. The businesses are leaving the plaza. We're talking about building more nightlife culture in El Cerrito. We have a whole block that's near me at Del Norte Place where we have our first cannabis dispensary, which is lit up every weekend. It's the only place in El Cerrito that is lit up, and young professionals want to come to a place that they can actually go out when they get off of work because they might not have children yet. So that's very important to me. The transit-oriented development is just one step to really revitalizing business in El Cerrito.
Lit up, literally?
Lit up, literally. You come by my house, Bob Butler, at 10:30 at night, you'll see it.
Vanessa, public safety is a big issue for everybody. Does El Cerrito have enough police and fire? Is the public safety good in El Cerrito?
Well, that's a, let me just say this. I have been a victim of violent crime as well as property crime, and I 100% agree that we need, everybody in our city, doesn't matter if you're, how old you are, how much money you have, what color you are, everyone needs to feel safe. And El Cerrito currently budgets more on police per capita than 94% of cities of the same size in America. We've already talked about how we are at the top of the state auditor's high-risk dashboard, and the state auditor has, in fact, advised us to reduce our police budget, and I support the state auditor's roadmap. It is true, and in fact, the mayor made his point that our 35% vacancy rate, the police department actually runs that vacancy rate artificially high. That increases the budget, but it then forces our police officers to work overtime, which drives down their effectiveness while driving up the cost. So I don't see cutting the budget, which the state auditor has recommended, as a trade-off with safety. I actually think we can use that money better to address root causes of crime. I support fair-budget El Cerrito in their calls to revisit our police budget, and I also support bringing 21st Century policing practices to El Cerrito, very much like BART has done with its police force. That means addressing ongoing, very real issues of sexism and racism within our police force. It includes rebuilding trust and legitimacy in the community, and it means creating better citizen oversight and systems of accountability. We have more seats empty than filled right now on our citizen oversight committees. I would definitely address that right away. That, I think, is how we start to reduce crime in our community and rebuild trust and do that in a meaningful and measurable way.
Mr. Mayor, how do you get people to sign up for the Oversight Council? I mean, that's something that I'm sure takes time.
I have been actively recruiting and I'm proud to say that Carolyn Weisinger is part of the Public Safety Committee and is working with our police and residents. These are volunteers that take time to attend these meetings and to deter crime. So deterring crime works, and looking at our, we're in the top of all the 19 cities when it comes to property crime. We've also had a lot of assaults, a lot of carjackings, a lot of stolen cars. So property crime is, we're in the top five. We're probably in the top three now. So looking at cities that have defunded, all of the mayors from Mayor Breed, the city of Oakland, the, you know, Tom Butt, the mayor of Richmond, have all pivoted from defunding the police. We are not going to do that, and this is why El Cerrito continues to be the safest, one of the safest cities in West Contra Costa County.
Do you have enough housing for people in El Cerrito? I mean, how many unhoused do you have?
We have a very small amount of unhoused. Now, these people are actually longtime homeless people that refuse services. So looking at the statistics, I am supporting Care Court, what the governor has put out there, and as a board member statewide of the League of California Cities, the League of California Cities supports Care Court. We need to take care in a human way, and in all the respect for them, to treat people with severe drug addiction, alcoholism, and homelessness. We've had a couple of assaults on the BART trail recently, and these are people that have been out of jail recently, and they had to go back to jail because they did it again. So this is something that we all need to deal with. As the chair of the Contra Costa Mayors Conference back in, you know, the early 2020, I was proud to work with the city of Walnut Creek, who was very active in the mayors conference, to make sure that it isn't one to replace the other. It's complementing each other and having both public safety and mental health and social workers. So I continue to support that, and we look forward to having that done. I'm very proud to be one of the original signers to support that particular bill because we see what's happening. It's a broken system, a system that you see the people, that it's the same people over and over and over again, and we want them to live a full life once again, and I think Care Court will facilitate that in a faster way where they can lead fulfilling lives once again and be part of society.
Okay, we're about out of time, but something, tell us something about you that people don't know. You've been in the public life for a long time. They know a lot of things about you, but there's got to be something people don't know.
You know, I owe this, you know, two terms in office because of my activism. Activism in the 1980s, dealing with our last pandemic that killed a lot of people, including dear friends of mine and significant others. So I, this is where I got my activism, is from that. And to see what we're seeing now, we're seeing another pandemic that we're dealing with, and I'm just so proud of Contra Costa Health in stepping up and make sure that these other things that we're dealing with, such as monkeypox, such as getting, having available the Omicron variety of shot. I was able to get that yesterday, and I say kudos to Contra Costa Health. They have worked time and time again, and I'm just very proud of collaborating with them, and they listen to the mayors.
Okay. Vanessa, something we don't know about you.
I'm going to do a shout-out to the Melody Lounge. I am a singer, and I sing with the Oakland Interfaith Gospel Community Choir, and El Cerrito is home to one of the most absolutely excellent, excellent karaoke bars, I think, in the world. It's called the Melody Lounge, and it's at the plaza, and I'll see you there.
Something we don't know about you, Carol.
Something that you don't know about me is that another fortunate or unfortunate thing is I am actually George Floyd's distant cousin, and so when we talk about public safety, that's very important to me because you mentioned me being the president of San Francisco Pride, and we went through something very public, having to do with public safety. And I will say two things that really shaped my pragmatic progressive view on public safety was talking to my cousins, Felonius and Kida, who are his brother and his sister-in-law, going through that, and what Kida said to me, she said, "Remember, Carolyn, we don't hate police. We hate what the criminal justice system has done, what it did to Georgia, and what it's doing to our people, and that is what we're fighting against." And it was really working with Mayor Breed because even though we did not come up on the same side of that issue, she was really the one that always challenged me to have a pragmatic, pragmatic view of what we're doing with public safety. You know, I came up in El Cerrito in the 90s where people were getting shot, adults were coming up to El Cerrito High School throwing bleach on kids, so I know a lot about that, and that's something that's very important to me.
Great. Well, thank you to our candidates for answering some of these very important questions. Each candidate now has two minutes to make a closing statement, and we'll start with you, Carolyn.
Thank you again, Bob. Thank you, Contra Costa TV, for having me here. As I said, I'm so honored to have the opportunity to actually serve a city that meant so much to me. I'm a city that taught me about being a leader, that made me want to go out into the community and learn how I could, you know, challenge this system and really change it in a meaningful way that supported our community members. I'm a fourth-generation West Contra Costa resident. My cousin has been on our police force. My uncle started the first black business in Contra Costa County. We have been very active in this county for over 50 years. And so coming into El Cerrito is something that's important to me and bringing that intersectional lens to the issues that are going to be affecting the city of El Cerrito. I want to make sure that people in the flats have the same opportunities as people in the hills. That's going to be my mainstay for four years on the city of El Cerrito City Council. You know, 25 years from the time that I left El Cerrito High School, being in leadership has really garnered me a lot of support for this seat, so I am supported by the 24-year incumbent, Janet Ableson, who is leaving our council. She has supported me. She says that she will feel comfortable knowing that I'm now sitting in her seat. I am supported by our district attorney, Donna Beckton, our board of supervisor, John Julia, our lieutenant governor, Laney Kunalakis, and a list of other elected officials in our Democratic Party because they know that it's time for us to start bringing in new folks to fill in that bench, and they know that I've been raised by them to do exactly this. So I look forward to having your vote. I look forward to seeing you again on Contra Costa Television as an elected official from the city of El Cerrito.
Thank you very much. Vanessa?
I'm the only clean-money, corporate-free candidate in this race, and the only candidate who has signed the No Fossil Fuel Many pledge. I am a Bay Area native, a mother, a wife. I have been a public advocate for the past decade for equitable climate solutions. I have focused on climate finance and ensuring equitable access to electric vehicle charging in our building codes in my professional career. I will fight as a city council member in El Cerrito for affordable housing, a fair and balanced budget, greater transparency, and more public engagement. I will fight for a new library for help for our small businesses and a return to essential services for young families and our community seniors. I'll fight for immediate climate action and a Green New Deal to create economic development and greater community resilience. My campaign has been endorsed by three of the five members of our Financial Advisory Board, by former El Cerrito mayor Rochelle Pardue Okimoto, by El Cerrito Progressive's co-founder Sherry Drobner, by El Cerrito Strollers &amp; Rollers co-founder Steve Price, as well as organizations including 350 Bay Area Action, Our Revolution East Bay. I've also been endorsed by Assembly Member Alex Lee and by Bill McKibben. I have received the Moms Demand Action Gun Sense Candidate Distinction, and I encourage you to visit VanessaForElCerrito.com to learn more about this people-powered campaign. I will represent all the people of El Cerrito, no matter your racial or ethnic background, no matter how old you are, no matter how much money you have, no matter what part of the city you live in. I believe in this beautiful city, and I will work hard to ensure it is run well and fairly to serve everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Gabriel?
Thank you, Bob. I'm honored to be here once again to ask for the support of El Cerrito voters and know that I am just so proud to work and be here at the same table with these two amazing women. As one of the original men of Emerge, I've supported women from the beginning and look forward to working with Carolyn or Vanessa, whoever wins, and I'm excited about that. As the environmental candidate, I am the only one endorsed by Sierra Club Bay Chapter and the League of Conservation Voters. As the executive committee member of Marine Clean Energy, I have been to Washington to speak on issues and earmarks such as EV infrastructure, hydrogen, battery energy storage, more EV infrastructure. We don't have any of that in El Cerrito, so looking at my recent trip to Washington, Congress is going to deliver. Speaking to our U.S. Senator's Office Legislative Director, Senator Feinstein and Padilla, they support what Marine Clean Energy is doing, and I'm proud to be on the executive committee for that. I am endorsed by many members from up and down the state, including the majority of El Cerrito mayors, the majority of city council members, former city council members, this current El Cerrito council, and the Sierra Club, John Julia, Nancy Skinner, Buffy Wicks. It's about housing for all, and I am proud that El Cerrito is one of the few cities, only one of 38, that is providing housing for all. So I look forward to the next generation being able to move back, once they're back in school, to have seniors who are by themselves to downsize and move to some of the new condo units or apartment buildings. I appreciate your vote, and I hope to earn that from you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That concludes our forum of the candidates running for the El Cerrito City Council. Once again, our candidates are Gabriel Quinto, Vanessa Warhite, and Carolyn Weisinger. For more information on the candidates, ballot measures, and who supports them, go to VotersEdge.org. The last day to register is October 24th. Now, all eligible registered Contra Costa voters will get a vote-by-mail ballot in the mail for the November 8th election. You can find detailed information on the upcoming election on the Contra Costa County Elections website, Cocovote.us. I'm Bob Butler from KCBS Radio. Thank you for watching, and don't forget to vote November 8th. Thank you for watching, and don't forget to vote November 8th.